Good morning, everybody. It's 10:00 AM on September 22nd, 2020, and I hereby call the meeting of Story County Board Supervisors to order. We're originating the meeting from our public meeting room in the administration buildings, Story County, Nevada. And we are providing public access via Zoom. Instructions are on the website and on the agenda. And I would ask anybody then who wants to, to join us in my pledge allegiance. My pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Already explained that we're providing public access via Zoom, and that's because of the continued restrictions on public meetings because of COVID-19. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
Still moved, second.
Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Agenda adopted. Next updates on COVID-19 issues. Do staff have any updates? If you're on the call, please raise your hand, or if you're joining by phone, star nine, unmute yourself. Anybody who's here in person have any updates? Seeing none, I'll ask supervisors if they have any updates.
The only thing I have looking at statewide numbers, it looks like we have 517 new statewide cases and 19 deaths. 28 new cases in Story County and no additional deaths when one person hospitalized from Story County.
Any other updates? Thank you. Then we'll go to public comment number one. This comment created is for the public to address topics on today's agenda. If there's anybody who would like to make a comment, please raise your hand or unmute yourself. Seeing none, I will close public comment session. And we'll go to discussion and consideration of items brought before the board with request for immediate action. Are there any such requests? Seeing none, we'll go on to a proclamation that we have identifying October 2020 as watershed awareness month. I will ask the other supervisors to join me by leaving the first few whereases, and then I will read the last one.
This is the watershed awareness month proclamation. Whereas water quality collaboration has been formed between the cities of Ames, Huxley, Nevada, and Gilbert, Story County, Prairie Rivers of Iowa, Leopold Center for Sustainable Agriculture, Story County Community Foundation, Isaac Walton League, and the Story County Soil and Water Conservation District. And whereas the purpose of the Story County 10-year water monitoring program is to collect and analyze water sampling data to increase residents' knowledge and understanding and identify problems in our watershed, to support and improve surface and groundwater quality, and whereas water quality and flooding issues in rivers, lakes, and streams cannot be mitigated without good stewardship of the private and public lands in the watersheds that drain to these waterways, and whereas implementing green infrastructure using native vegetation and improving soil health aids in absorbing and filtering out excess nutrients and pollutants through use of the land, and
Whereas educating about how we impact the health of watersheds where we live through our everyday activities, and whereas keeping our watersheds heavily protected, heavily healthy protects public health, water supply, fisheries, wildlife, agriculture, supports agriculture, economic development, and enhances recreation activities in our communities. Whereas the Story County Board Supervisors does hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as watershed awareness month. We are jury citizen within Story County to recognize the importance of the watershed in which you live and to commit to keep learning and identify how you can make a difference even in your own backyard since 22nd day of September 2020. I would entertain a motion to approve the proclamation as read.
I would still move, second.
Any further discussion? If not, Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin?
Aye.
Proclamation is adopted. Thank you. And I want to thank all the communities that are working on the water monitoring program. I know they've had a slower start than we anticipated because of COVID-19. That's not like everything else. It's been, you know, delayed some things, but people have kept moving on it and are at the point of making some progress. So I want to thank them publicly. We'll go into agency reports. There are none. Consideration of minutes. We don't have any to review. And go on to consideration of personnel actions. And we have one addition. It's a new hire, effective 9/20/20, in the auditor's office for SKYE, Fred Zinner, at $15 an hour. So I would entertain a motion to approve the action forms with that addition.
Still moved, second.
Okay. Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Adopted. Next, we'll go on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to pull from consent?
There is. I do want to pull number five, the 21 days of equity.
Equity?
Equity. Sorry. Okay. So I would move the rest of the consent agenda to be approved as presented with the exception of that.
Second.
Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Adopted. Now, on to item five, consideration of Story County Registry. As supporter of the United Way of Central Iowa's 21-day Equity Challenge. And Alyssa Whitman was here, and I
I put it on.
You placed it on the agenda, so
I did.
Maybe you can answer supervisor Olson's question.
Sure. My question is, is that when we do United Way Day of Care, we pay people for the time that they've spent doing that, right? Okay? So that's kind of a contribution we make in kind. On this, it's 21 days, and some days they'll get a poster according to this info flyer. But some days there'll be a video or whatever. Is it your intent that what we're approving is for them to participate in this during their working?
This isn't just for employees. This would be for stuff that can be pushed out to the community.
Okay.
Yeah. So no, I mean, unless their supervisors say, yeah, you can watch these videos during their workday. No, it's just to get that awareness out there. It's something, you know, we have an admission statement, so it kind of coincides with that. I did talk a little bit with Leanne to see if we could push some of the, you know, information out. People sign up on their own, so it's not necessarily a compensated work program. That's not what my intent was. My intent was that the county could support it, and we could push it out. We could push it out to the community. We can push it out to employees if they want to do that. I think it's a great program. I don't know what's all entailed, because I've never participated. But there's no cost to it. There's, you know, the supporters don't pay. You just sign up. But I felt like we needed the support of the board in order to push it out.
So when you say push it out, we would put it on our website, we would put it on social media, and we simply have a link that people could go to United Way to access it.
And this is United Way of Central Iowa. I went out and looked. I didn't see anything else, Story County doing this. But I know there are a lot of, when I went out to look at who signed up, Ames School District, City of Ames, lots of different cities. It's not just within the Polk County, Central Iowa region, so.
So, and that was just, you know, the clarification that I think we needed to make since we do United Way of Care.
No, this would just, this is not like a wellness program or anything. This is more pushing. It's our mission, you know, if people want to participate.
Yeah. Okay. So I would move that we sign on as a supporter of the 21 days.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Before I go, Alyssa, I want to thank you for noticing this and putting this on the agenda. You're right, it fits in with our mission and very good. Olson?
Aye.
Edens?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. Approved. We'll go on to public hearing items. The second consideration of ordinance number 289, amending certain boundaries of the official zoning map of Story County, Iowa. Amelia Shonerman, it looks like you're on the call. Good morning, Amelia.
Yes, good morning. You heard this request, the first consideration, at your last meeting. This is the second consideration of a rezoning request to remove conditions limiting the uses per minute in the commercial light industrial district. Again, the conditions limit the current uses to seed, research, and warehousing-related uses, and the applicant wishes to have a more broad commercial use that fits better within the commercial light industrial district zoning. So they're requesting to remove the conditions. We've received no further comments from the public. Typically in these situations where we've received no further comments, we recommend waiving the third consideration. Again, you took action to approve the first consideration. The applicant did also reach out because they sustained some major damage to their existing building in Slater with the derecho, and they do need to move out of that building before the first snowfall. So they've also requested the waiver of the third consideration. So we would recommend that you take action to approve the request on second consideration and waive third consideration.
Are there any questions for me?
Well, wait. I'm sorry. Wait. She has something for the public.
That's right. I'm sorry. Yes. Forgot. Yes.
Hearing no further discussion, I will open public hearing. Are there any members of the public who have anything to add or that they'd like us to consider? If not, I will close the public hearing and entertain a motion to approve ordinance number 289 on second consideration and waive third consideration.
Still moved, second.
Any further discussion? Not Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Merkin? Aye. It's approved. Thank you, Amelia.
Thank you.
Go on to 15 additional items. Discussion and consideration of directing county staff who posted open meeting notices pursuant to Section 21.4 to post said notices so they're visible from outside the main doors of the county building, which is the principal office of the body holding meeting, or if no such office exists of the building in which the meeting is to be held. This building is closed to the public due to the COVID-19 pandemic. I put this on the agenda after we had some concerns and discussion last Tuesday that we didn't, that even though we were putting all of our public meetings on our website, that we were not posting some of them where they could be accessible from outside of the building. That was a locked, a locked building and maybe more monlocation. We've not received any complaints from the public, but we thought we better clear that up. At that point, I said, let's put this on the agenda. In fact, I was asked to. But then I realized we had other meetings coming up, and we really needed to get moving on this. So I did send out an email to staff after talking with our civil attorney and just basically reiterated the code section. So I don't know if we need to do formal directing of county employees today, or, and certainly can do this if that's what the board would like to do.
Well, I think the goal is to make sure not only that it's posted online, but that we are consistently posting it on maybe our window or some other place so folks come up to the building itself. If it's being held at like the administrative building, for example, that it's posted on, or so they can also see the agenda there if the doors are locked where they can't see it on our bulletin board inside, to just make sure that we are consistent in doing that. I think that is something that we probably need to make sure that all elected officials and department heads just remember that that is what we need to be doing.
I think, and I heard, that was very politely worded. I mean, it's the law, okay? That we have, that's the law, and it's very clear what the law says. So that our posting, so maybe it's good to remind people that the website, while we have done a policy, or we've done a direction from the board table that all agendas related to county business get also put on the website. The website is our effort to go above and beyond the law, right? And this is the actual law. And so, yeah. So I'm good. I just, as a reminder to all of us, is that if we ask ourselves every time is, have we done everything we could reasonably to let the public, keep the public aware, both legally and from an effort, I think we'll be in good shape. So, yeah. I do like to come to the actual motion itself and just point out to the last part of this, due to the COVID-19 pandemic. And I'm wondering, given our discussion in item three, if that's the wording we want. And it's, oh, my, I'm sorry, my mask just slipped off. And do we want to limit it to due to COVID-19, due to the COVID-19 pandemic? And instead, if we want to maybe just say, if said building is closed to the public more than two business days or more than four business days? So that covers everything. Like I said, as we go down to item number three, we're going to have a discussion about whether we're going to open this building up or whether we're going to accommodate one depart, or one office again, okay? And so if we accommodate that office again, I don't think we're accommodating due to COVID anymore. All right? So that's why I think that it's fair to take out the due to the COVID-19 pandemic and just say that is public, closed to, closed to the public due to, you know, and one day is not good enough because we do have holidays that happen on one day or two days. With Thanksgiving, we've always got those two days off, Thursday and Friday. So, but we definitely want to make sure that things get posted if our building's going to be closed for several days in a row. And maybe that's just what we say, several days.
Haven't we always posted our agendas ahead of time considering that, Shelley?
I'm sorry, what?
Don't, don't you post, say, our agendas for the board? You consider when we're going to be closed to the public when you post the agendas. Correct?
I post them on Friday, and I post them on the wall. If we're closed on Monday because of a holiday, I don't post it on the front door.
Right. They don't see it. See, that's the issue. So, so that is
They can come in and see it on Friday when I post it.
So once again, what I said before about the philosophy about us, have we done what we can to really
So you want me to move it to the front door because we're going to be closed on a holiday on Monday? Is that what you're asking?
Actually, I'm going to come back to what you said before, Shelley. And actually, you put out the tentative on that Thursday, do you not?
No.
No? You still put out the tentative on the Friday and the final on a Tuesday, even though we have the final?
No.
Yeah. So that's
The final is Friday. The deadline is Thursday so that we can make sure everything is correct.
When we're
The final goes out on Friday afternoon. So it's out there.
So, but we have, we pushed the deadline back one day when we're closed on a Monday, right?
Correct.
So we still have, given to Shelley's point about there's, there's actually a full day when people can come in and look at it, at least the tentative on that, okay? But I think what, you know, that's, that's why I'm saying, but what if we have two or three days? So Shelley, Shelley's already set up for that. But this goes beyond Shelley. I mean, we had, to our knowledge, we had all kinds of boards and commissions and various district meetings and whatever that were not being posted on the front window. You know, it wasn't just a couple of situations. So I'm just saying that if we just put a period and eliminate the due to COVID-19, that gives instead any time for several days or any time for more than three days we're closed, okay? That takes care of what I think is going to be a difficult conversation in item number three. At least from my perspective, because if we stay closed any longer, we are no longer closed to COVID.
I feel kind of like we're rewriting the code of Iowa here. That's my concern. No, I supported that straight out of code of Iowa.
But it doesn't say due to COVID-19.
No.
So it's closed.
Added period.
So that's why I understand, let's just get rid of COVID-19.
Well, this came up because our practice, our, this came up because our practice that had been done for a very, very long time was, didn't work. And we didn't realize with all the COVID-19 accommodations that we were making, we didn't realize that having the doors locked meant that people didn't have the access they normally had to where people were posting the hard copy agenda. So that's why I didn't try to, all I tried to do when I wrote this was when that came up, to write something that would take that into account. I wasn't intending to rewrite our whole previous practice. That's all I'm saying.
I understand that. And like I said, the reason that this is why I'm uncomfortable with the due to COVID-19 remaining is this very difficult decision, or I see very difficult conversation we're going to have on item three about opening the admin building. Okay? And so I'm just trying to make it clear to everybody that if we keep the admin building closed because one department wants it closed, one office wants it closed, then we really aren't keeping it closed due to COVID-19. Well, I'm just trying to be accurate and
And I'm not sure that I'm understanding what that is, because maybe you're going through with that, into that. What if we did this? Where it says, if said building is closed, and then in parentheses, put fully or partially.
That's good. Right?
Because I do understand that one of the things being proposed is that we open half time. So it would be a partial closure in my mind. And that would mean that, okay, we're realizing we're open, we're not fully open if we do that. If we have partially as, is that?
Yeah, I think that covers.
Say it one more time.
After the, after closed in the last line there?
Yeah.
It says closed to the public. Put fully or partially in parentheses behind closed.
And that's, are you really going to period then? Is that what you're saying? Or you're going to keep, or you proposing we keep the due to COVID-19? I'm proposing to keep that now.
I don't have a problem with keeping the COVID-19 because that would be one of the reasons why we're either fully or partially
Right. I understand. I do understand that, but I, I perceive that the discussion on number three, item three, is we're there, now I'm going to talk about reopening the admin building, where most of these agendas would be, have to be moved to the front class, or keep being moved to the front class. And we're saying that, that we would be closing it, keeping it closed because of COVID-19. And we haven't made that determination yet. What we've got instead is we've got a department who says they're not opening up because they're, they're being not ready. Because
Let's do this.
Yes.
Let's do this. Because you're alluding to some things that I'm not sure I've heard in terms of making this decision. What I would like to do is say, can we agree to take this item we're currently talking about, pull that in advance, and talk about it again after we've done item three?
I think that'd be great. That sounds good.
Okay. Let's do that. Then let's go on to consideration of $100 grant in Story County Hunger Collaboration to be used to pay dues for one year. My understanding reading that is that that would pay the dues, Story County would be basically contributing for the dues this year, and they ask some other member of the collaboration to do so next year.
Correct.
So we'd be leading one of those.
Correct.
It's not been done before.
It's not been done before. The Iowa Coalition, Hunger Coalition is a relatively new group, whereas the Story County Hunger Coalition has been around for several
So this is a one-time
This is a one-time request.
And they don't have other funds?
No. We are strictly, there's no money from United Way or anything. This is a collaboration where people get together to coordinate activities, but do not
And it's sun licensed. They don't have a budget. It wasn't even required that they do the 100, but that's kind of a goodwill fund.
That is correct. That's a goodwill to the Iowa Hunger Coalition.
Any other questions? No? I entertain a motion.
I'll move approval of the $100 grant to the Story County Hunger Collaboration for a one-time payment of dues. I second.
Do we need to
To the Iowa Hunger Coalition.
Let me ask, do we need to identify the source of funds?
From the general fund. From the general fund.
Okay. General fund. Any further discussion? Edens?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
An aye. Passed. Discussion and consideration of reopening the administration building and/or all buildings. We have had, um, two, I think, memos from Jovi Brogdon regarding this issue. And we also did receive an email from Treasurer Rasmussen. And Conservation Center also did something, adopted something the other day. And I tried to look at it on their agenda this morning, and something's wrong with the agenda online, and part of it's disappeared. So I just made hard copies, too, in my phone for myself. Might have to look back at it if I need to. So anyway, um, we have before us, maybe we need to start a general discussion. What are we, what are we talking about now? We already have, the Justice Center is open to the public. Are we talking about all buildings, some buildings? And I'm not sure how to start this conversation now, but Jovi, maybe you could start us out with a couple of comments and recommendations. Give you an option to give us your recommendations again.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, I think we've all received or seen Ted Rasmussen's email. You know, we discussed last month what it could possibly look like if we opened the administration building. Things we discussed were modified hours, kind of semi-landed on afternoon-type schedule. Was preferred, and that was a lot driven by my department, because that put us close in the building at as close to normal as we used to. There was talks of designated entry doors, designated exit doors. That's doable with our keyless entry system. We can independently unlock one set versus the other. I do have some vinyl temporary signage made up to, if that's the route that we take, I have the signage to put on the doors, you know, we discussed. Using some, I call it movie theater roping. It's retractable, kind of a yellow barrier, to kind of put some separation at the front entry to make it a little more obvious that we want you walking on one side versus the other. Talked about hanging some signs, putting some designated, just to kind of get people to come in one side, and primarily when they leave, go out the other side, just to keep people separated. There was many discussions on the different things some offices might do, might not do. And some of that included by appointment only, using the scheduling software, which would then require staffing the front desk. You know, we kind of discussed who is going to be staffing that, what the requirement is if we're sitting up there to confirm appointments, various things like that.
How much time, Jovi, do you think you've put in on all those recommendations, et cetera? Prior, and then before, when you issued that, and then came to the board with us at the end of August?
Sitting down, meeting with everybody?
Yeah. And thinking about logistics and the whole. How much time have you put into a well-thought-out plan?
Probably close to 40 total hours.
Okay. I just appreciate it, because you've done a really good job.
Thank you.
And, and the goal was, is we were looking at, you'd ask after September 8th. And then we voted at that meeting, however, on September 8th, due to a spike in COVID numbers. We decided to revisit this on the 22nd. Correct?
Yep. That's my remembering subject as well.
So let me ask you about your plans from the standpoint of, they were all designed that the treasurer's office would be open. And other departments had said, yes, we'll go ahead and help staff that front desk and fend off people who want to see the treasurer if they don't have an appointment. We basically went ahead and, as it turned out, were contracting monthly for an appointment software that really is, was for, it sounds like the treasurer's office, maybe the recorder's office a little bit, right? Okay. So when you got Mr. Rasmussen, or Treasurer Rasmussen's memo stating he wasn't going to be open until October 6th, because his staff got because of COVID, to be opened until October 6th because his staff got because of COVID, but because his staff was unable to handle the workload, is that kind of, that's my summary of it. What did you think about, what kind of, did you think about modifications we could make so that the rest of the building could open up, say tomorrow?
I think, you know, I'm going to, my, my opinion on it. Ted can weigh it, I'm sure he will.
Yeah, he can defend himself.
I think his date was more chosen based off of the factor of property taxes ending at the end of September. And getting past that would help with less confusion if we opened before that. And then the thought was the auditor's office is most likely going to request to unlock the building to hold in person vote.
I'm going to ask you my question again because I'm going to have Ted defend why you wouldn't open up.
I, I don't know why I am defending something, Loris. I'm stating that for our office, if we open prior to property tax season being closed, we will not be able to allow all the people who want to come in and pay in person due to straight logistical reasoning because of the appointment software and the requirements, short of us opening the doors and just saying, "It is a free-for-all, no appointments, we're back to the way we were." I felt that that would be unfair to those taxpayers who want to come in and pay in person but cannot make an appointment. It would cause a lot of confusion, a lot of issues in line management in the lobby, which technically that's outside of our office and we will only limit the numbers in our office. But if we're going to follow the building standards that the board passed, we do not feel that it is smart in any way for our staff, for the public. And we do not feel it is fair to the public to open before September 30th. We could open on October 1st, but then we feel like we would see the same thing where we'd see a lot of people upset, saying they were waiting to, for us to open to pay their property taxes in person. And then they would want us to be, they would want, they would want us to waive any late fines on October 1st.
Read the memo and I, so let's go, I'd like to know what happened to the plan. And that's what I asked Jovi here, was what happened to the plan that everybody worked on a month ago and you said we were okay with, and you said you would even be able to contribute staff to help staff that front desk. I mean, we had it, I thought we had it all worked out.
What happened, Loris, is it got pushed back three weeks. If we would have been open the whole month of September, it would have been different. We're talking about the last eight days. We got, yesterday, we probably got 1,200 pieces of mail. We're in the midst of property tax season, which is, we are not even at 50% of total payments so far.
Yeah.
We are going to have a ton of property tax come in. If we had done this from the beginning of September and people who wanted to pay in person had the chance to set up their time, we could have made this work. But now we're in the last eight days of September, it's not a feasible plan for us to open in this, in the month of September.
I'm chairing this meeting and I just want to say something. Let's not go back and try to do a, why, why didn't we do this? Why didn't we do that? Whose fault is that? I think we need to move forward. And if we are on September 22nd, we're, we have one week left in the month of September. Jovi's memo before said after September 8th. I didn't see that you gave any specific date after September. You just said, "Wait till after September 8th." And the supervisors haven't had it on the agenda until today. So obviously if there's reason that it hasn't been, wasn't done on September 9th or September 10th, that would be on our, on our part, not on anybody else's. I'd just like us to move forward and talk about where we are now on the 22nd, what we still have going on and what makes most sense at this point.
Yeah, I suppose.
Okay. That's, that's where I would ask. I, I have several things I just thought about this morning that I think we should address in terms of when and how we open. And I'm just going to go through my list if I might.
Sure.
One of them is which building or buildings. And the second, and I honestly think we shouldn't just, we should talk about each building individually. Second is the date to open. Thirdly, hours of operation. Fourth, are we going to allow walk-ins or by appointment? Fifth, staffing the front desk. And I have staffing the front desk after walk-ins or by appointments because I think what we expect of staff at the front desk and who that is depends on how people are coming in. Any restrictions? Signage? We've got a lot of signs on all our doors. We have to have a plan to remove some of those signs and/or modify some of those signs or, and have additional signage. And I know, Jovi, you've been working on a lot of it and Lee and I have, but we, we don't want things plastered on our doors. We've got tons of stuff plastered on that glass now that needs to come down if we're opening or modifying. I didn't, and, and then reconsidering unlock, the unlocking, what our criteria would be to say, no, this was too soon or things have happened and we need to reconsider, you know, coming, coming back and, you know, to, to maybe locking doors again. What our criteria would be. And I'm just going to say right now, when we first closed our buildings, there were very few cases in Story County. So you look at that and say, there's a lot more cases in Story County. Yeah, we have over a thousand active cases if you look at, on the IDPH website does this. But we know more about COVID-19 now than we knew then. We have a lot of precautions in place. So I look back at that and say, this is why we said we, the things we would use to say we'd reopen. And some of that was, has changed, I think, in our minds. But I think we should consider now how we would unlock.
I'd like to point out, and I'm sorry, since we have had meetings since nine o'clock, I haven't had time to print this out. But I, my husband has been following our cases daily. He's been following, according to the John Hopkins reported numbers that come out at midnight every night. So I will pass to my two fellow supervisors, the graph that shows that we did have that spike in like September 5th, 6th, but then the yellow line, if you look, and then I'll carry this down to Lisa, is that it shows that we are on a downward trajectory of new cases.
Yes, we are.
For deaths, we had that spike also, and a spike for us was, I think, three, four deaths, and we're down to zero again.
And I would also say, we are down, but we were down before and it went back up. We don't know what the future will bring and we have to have some kind of idea how we'll deal with the future. I, I've been much more sophisticated.
So, so, but this was one of our measurements and are we ever going to open up? If given upon just this one, if we spike up and down, will we ever open back to the public who pays for these buildings and to deliver them service?
All I was intending, I was not intending to make a, to debate whether or not we're opening. I was just saying, I made a list of the things that I think we need to decide today if we're going to reopen a building or not. That's all. So I'm, I'm first going to suggest that we talk about the buildings separately. And the reason is because different, there are different functions in different buildings. There are different things that happen and they may, that may, um, that may, um, mean we should look at the buildings differently. We already did that with the Justice Center.
Well, and I thought we were doing that like with the last, with the last meeting we had or the one before, which, which I think we need to revisit. So I, I will, I will differ with that because I recall when we, there was the recommendation to keep the animal shelter closed till they were fully staffed.
Correct.
Um, there were situations at the Human Services Building with, uh, you know, really no personnel on the main door. That's why we kind of changed the door lock because the staffer in the basement of that building. So how we're going to do that. So I think going building by building is fine so that we are all very clear what's going on with each of those buildings and the recommendation there. I think the bigger issue is going to come down to the admin building.
Correct.
And stuff. So we are just clear building by building with each of the others and then come back to the admin.
And I thought, I agree with you, Lisa. We did that. That's what we did when we discussed not opening on September 8th. We split the buildings out then. I thought we'd given those directions about admin, about the Human Services Center. We understood that Conservation had a plan and they were going to go off on their own way. We do, the sheriff had already gone off, or the sheriffs and the county attorney had already gone off. What do we have left but the admin building?
Well, we have the Human Services Building and we have secondary roads.
Yeah. So I'd just like the update on those.
Yeah.
What's on them and then come back to here.
Well, let's start with Conservation. Because Conservation Board did do a plan and it was put together by their staff. Jovi, I think you know about it. I couldn't make another.
No, I tried to look at it as well from their website and wasn't able to see what they discussed on, was it the 14th? Was that what they?
Yeah.
So I don't know what, you know. And I also haven't asked Mike about it.
You do, I can do it. I just got copies. Copy what? I can do it. Here, how many copies do you want? Oh, it's three. Five. Three or four, either five.
I make six, I can get one back.
Sure.
Yes. I go, I only need two. I thought I had, I think I left one on the copy machine. Or I didn't make it. Anyway, what, what the Conservation folks wanted to do was a phased opening and, and they were, they wanted to make it based on new case numbers. And the reason they did that phased is because right now, they thought the first thing would be to open their outer lobby and the restrooms for people who are using the Farland Park outside. Now they've got some fibos or whatever for bodies. And they thought they could open and keep those closed. Next would be opening the inner lobby and the office. They still have a locked door between that lobby and their staff, but that would allow people access to that inner lobby. Then the final thing would be using the public meeting room for outside events. And that makes sense because that's not one thing they do that not a lot of our places do is they have lots of members of the public come in. And they thought that a phased, and, and a lot of their people who take place, take, take part of their activities are in the older generations. And that's the Alex group and those folks. So that's why they thought that a phased approach makes sense. I think, and, and I, I agree with that. You know, we can always, you know, we can always nitpick the detail and say, well, I'd rather have it be this or that. But I know they did put a lot of thought into it and personally I'm supportive of the approach that they are taking.
So I'd just like to point here, actually their phase one is not just access to the restrooms. It's access to the entire restrooms, exhibits at lobby and multipurpose room and front desk.
Okay.
So that makes much more sense to me.
Okay.
And then looking at the programming and then looking at the room rental. So, okay, good. I mean, you know, so, so that makes much more sense. So they're going to be interacting with the public to provide some services and be able to answer questions also in person under this plan. And then the programming is dependent on it. Okay, thank you for that.
When are they looking at implementing?
Then the 14-day rolling total for Story County individual expenses.
Oh, okay, sorry. Uh, we're way below that.
The 14-day rolling total.
Yeah.
14 days.
So our spike was on, okay, September. It looks like it was September 3rd or 4th, according to my husband's grant. He's got the first and then the next is the 6th, okay? And the, the big point up. So then we immediately come back below by about, by certainly the 5th. So from about the 5th, judging on his grant, his graph, we have a continual downward yellow line, which is that rolling total, also continually the average down to today, which is about around 20.
When I ask specifically, are you talking about an average or are you talking about a 14-day total? And it's a 14-day total they are looking at.
It's looking at the total here. It's, it's every day. It's every day. And you can look then at the, the gray spikes. Those are the daily number of new.
How many new cases does Story County have yesterday?
So let's do a, oh, I didn't look at how many, or, the difference between yesterday and today was 28.
That's 28 cases a day. So a 14-day rolling total of 100 is seven cases a day.
So they're going to stay completely closed here until we only have in seven cases a day as an average for 14 days. That's way below, I think, the 5%. We're at 8% on the testing right now, correct? Yeah. I mean, uh, I can't understand why the, the, they would not open the restrooms, the lobby and the front desk at least. All right? I don't understand about that, given the fact that they're behind glass so that nobody has to interact with another member of the public without glass in between them and the public. So I'm unclear about that, setting that particular number. I mean, wow.
Very low.
It's really, really low.
We go through...
I don't think people want, do people really want to open? I mean, do we want to have the public come to their buildings? Do we want to be able to, to really conduct business? We've done what we can about providing supplies, providing barriers. We're looking at only opening hard to fat time. But when I look at something like this, I'm really wondering, what are we telling the people who pay for these buildings who pay our salaries?
I was trying to pull up some of the percentages on Story County. I just.
Let's do this. I brought this up because you said, you know, we decided to do, you know, let Conservation Board decide. Now I'm hearing a little bit differently on that.
I'm just questioning, we, we said let the Conservation Board decide, we'll let them. I mean, it's all rolls uphill here. It's still going to stay with us, you know? But, you know, we said that and they picked those. I'm just quite unclear about what their purpose is.
And I asked very carefully, do you, are you talking about total or average? And they said total. I didn't, you know, I'm going to go back and talk with Mike again. Maybe, let's do this. Where we get the most calls and where we have the, the most concern is the admin building and specifically the treasurer's office.
Right.
So maybe rather than take places off the list, let's try another tactic then in terms of how we make the decision. Let's start with the admin building and say, well, at least make a decision today regarding the admin building because that seems to be the place where we've got the most concern. Should we talk about the, just the admin building? Okay. Then I'm going to ask some questions. I'm going to kind of, if you don't mind, let me guide it, try to guide the discussion with the list I have in front of me and if we can discuss as we go. I would suggest, for the reasons that the treasurer has put in his memo that would consider Monday, October 5th as the date to open the admin building.
Is that a suggestion or a motion? Because if it's not, I'm going to make a motion that we open it tomorrow. I mean, because I want to cut, I want to cut right in there. Okay? And start from that point. I may not get a second, but if your suggestion is, I'll make a motion.
There is a motion on the floor now to open the admin building tomorrow.
Did you make a motion?
I did. I did. I came right in.
She said if I was not making a motion, I was just making a suggestion. And I did not make a motion. Is there a second? Okay, motion, guys, relax, a second. Is there another motion?
I don't know. I guess I thought we were discussing first before we, except the last. I, I, I get it.
I'm trying to figure out how we get through this because we could discuss it forever. So I'm trying to move us ahead.
No, I, I, I recognize. I looked at, you know, our previous documentation, our discussion, and I also looked at Ted's letter, all the information that Jovi has provided us as well. If I'm understanding Ted's concern correctly is his reason for recommending October 5th, and I'm not saying whether I'm gay or not, I'm just sarcasm on it, is that he could, he could have a huge influx of people come in and we wouldn't be able to meet the social distancing or paying property taxes. Uh, we've got a appointment software, but you'd have a whole bunch of people coming in within this short timeframe to just say, hey, I want to do it in person. And how do we control that? That's, am I understanding that from Jovi and Ted correctly? That's, am I understanding that from Jovi and Ted correctly?
That's, part of my concern is that the, another part of my concern is we just started our remodel in the office. So if you hear saws or drills in the background, they're in the midst of remodeling our office to provide another lower desk. So I don't think we will be done for at least a week or a week and a half. Jovi might have the better, like, timeframe on the schedule for completing that remodel. But the biggest concern for us is we're only going to be able to allow about seventy, between seventy and eighty appointments a day unless we're, unless the building is open. Well, actually, that's all we can allow, period. Because we have to have time to work on our mail, too. Because mail's going to keep coming in. So at seventy to eighty appointments a day during property tax season, we'll typically have over a hundred and fifty to two hundred people come in just from, just from about three o'clock until the end of the day. The last week of property tax season. With the way this building is set up, we can't social distance them in our lobby. So they're going to have to be throughout the building. I don't know that we have any good way to do that and try to do it in a manner that works, even if we weren't remodeling and had half of our desk covered up from the remodeling. So I guess with the fact that we're just now getting the remodeling going, I would say even if the building is able to open before the end of September, I don't think the audit, or the treasurer's office will be able to open before the end of September.
I'd like to ask about the remodeling. This is the first I've heard about this. What decision was made to start a remodel, knowing that at any, that we were going to discuss this? And we already had a plan in place? And I'm sorry, and I'm sorry, Jovi, if you think I'm picking on you, or Ted, if you think I'm picking on you. But who made a decision, knowing that we were trying to work toward remodeling, started a project like that?
We've been trying to do it for six months. And our contractors, when we first asked for bids, we couldn't even get any bids. We finally got a few bids. I think maybe two, maybe only one. And this is when they were able to come in. I didn't want to wait six more months to get it done. I looked at the timeframe and realized that the earliest the building could be open is with six days to go in September, or six working days anyway. And I knew that that wouldn't work for our office. So Jovi said they can come in this week. And I said, let's get it done before we reopen at the end of September.
Ted, do you recognize that, that there are other people, there are other offices and other departments in this building? And we had an arrangement in place. I've heard what you said about, well, I can't handle the volume for the last ten days, but...
I'm not saying we can't handle the volume. I'm saying the building, with any of the restrictions that we have in place, short of you guys reopening without any, following any CDC guidelines and just saying, we're going to go back to the way it was on March fifteenth and we can let as many people stand in that lobby as we want. We cannot handle it. This building can't handle it unless we are going to hire staff and security to keep a line of what could be seventy-five people six feet apart. That's what I'm saying. I'm saying that we'll get it done. But it's, I'm providing service to the public of my office as required by Iowa code. I have to provide it in the best way possible for the public and for my staff and for the county in general. And reopening at this point in time was not good for any of those things.
I'm not interested in a, in a hearing and argument back and forth for half an hour here. I'm interested in us getting a way to move forward. I need to say that. I'm trying to facilitate a discussion and it keeps kind of going into the back and forth argument. I'm not sure what to do here, except can I ask some questions?
Please ask the question.
I'm going to ask you a question, Supervisor Olson.
Yeah.
You said that the treasurer's holding the whole building house.
I do.
Have you, who was, I've not heard from anybody saying, can we please, please open tomorrow?
No. And that's part of my concern. I'm still hearing from members of the public. I think that, that the treasurer, and so you're right. Am I representing the staff here? I think I'm representing staff who are perfectly able and capable of doing their jobs and can do their jobs under a variety of situations. Or people, or people who say yes. They may be getting comments out there themselves.
I was just asking for clarity because I wasn't sure what you were saying.
I feel like every, okay, Mike, you asked about a comment. My comment is every time we come up with a plan and we make and discuss stuff, then the treasurer's office comes back with changes. And because it's the volume here, that seems to be the issue. I feel like we are being held. We can't open back up to our public because the treasurer keeps on changing things. And that I do feel is almost what I find a hostage situation. Because if we do open up tomorrow, follow my motion, all right? We, that, we can tell people, stay apart. We're not dropping that. And we're still going to make people wear masks. We're not dropping that. But they're going to want to be banging on the treasurer's door. So really, we still are going to have to, anything we do to take care of our own staffs, who will get the phone calls and who will get the people who'll come in and want that, or the assessor's office, same thing. We are once again being driven by what the treasurer says he and his staff will or won't do.
Morris, I asked that the offices be opened August one. I had my appointment system ready to go. I said that we did not want to go back and forth to the front door all day because we do not have time to escort people in and out of the building. If the door had been unlocked August first, we would have been fine. If the door had been unlocked September seventh, we would have been fine. We're not okay right now. The only plan that I supposedly stopped from happening was one that required our group to walk back and forth to a locked door. We said we would not go back and forth and unlock a door. Right now, I am providing the services of the office. We are working very hard in this office. Our clerks take between sixty and eighty calls a day. That's per clerk. That's not per office. That's per clerk. Our, our clerks are working nonstop. It would be much easier to open the doors. I'm saying that we have to make a good decision for everyone. And right now is the worst possible time for us to try to reopen on a limited basis. We can reopen on a limited basis a month ago, or we can wait until September is complete and reopen. And I think it's very unfair for you to characterize our clerks as not being willing to do the extra work when right now they are incredibly swamped and working like crazy. Because some folks are calling other offices when we have a busy signal when we're processing sixty to a hundred calls a day per person.
I'm going to try this again. I will make a motion. Let's see where it goes. I move that we open the admin building on Monday, October fifth, two thousand twenty. That our hours of operation, that the doors are unlocked will be from twelve to four. And that we not just do by appointment, but that we do allow walk-ins. And the reason for that, I'm going to say, after I make my motion, and that we have a staff plan put together for staffing the main desk. And we would ask our Director of External Operations and Director of Internal Operations to work on that with the tenants of the building. The reason I say walk-ins rather than by appointment is because I think it creates some difficulty for the person who's at the front desk. They have to turn people away because they don't have an appointment. Okay, so that's my motion.
I'm going to second that only because I want discussion on it. So part of the issue with having the person at the front desk was to help with appointments. I'm trying to figure out if we open to the public, why would we have someone at the front desk?
What, some of what has been said to me is women could have somebody at the front desk for a couple of weeks just to make sure everything was going okay and people knew, you know, people had been in the building for a while just as a, maybe a two-week test period. And then if we decided that signage was sufficient, we wouldn't necessarily have to have anybody there. My concern about doing it by appointment is that the person who's, um, most of the appointment, the software would be used by the treasurer's office, just about totally, I think. And if people were coming in and wanting to make an appointment there, it would be somebody who's not a treasurer's office employee who would have to know the appointment software for the purposes of helping people make an appointment with the treasurer's office. And I just didn't think that made a lot of sense to have appointments being made there. That's all. But we could, we could talk about that later, whatever. But I was just, you know, maybe you want to take that out of the motion and simply just say, that we open October fifth, hours of operation, twelve to four, and we let staff figure out the details.
May I ask, then, following up on this a little bit here, okay? Could we have not done that if we opened tomorrow, okay, with the, the fact that the person, there'd be no appointment? And that person would just be sitting there saying, sorry, the treasurer's office isn't open. There's the box to drop your payment. Here's their phone number. And then that would have let the rest of us, and I know your motion is the sixth, but I'm pointing out that what you basically, huh? Yeah, sorry. Okay, yeah. So that you're pointing out that if that person is not going to be, if there's not going to be appointments required, all right? Then why couldn't we do it earlier? Because that has all the rest of the components and that would be our test period.
And because of the concern, which I share, of all the people who will come in that last week to pay their property taxes and the difficulties in social distancing. Yes, we can tell people, we can run around, there are signs, we can tell people, stay six feet apart. But if you can avoid a problem by, by waiting a week when the volume of people coming in is a lot less, why not just wait that week and avoid that problem?
Because I, back to, I feel like it's at the time when the public most wants to connect with at least part of their county government. And that county government is, says, it's not convenient for us to connect with you right now. That's, that's why.
I don't think anybody's called convenient.
Well, because we can make it happen. We, well, by make it happen, we can have a person down there who does say, please keep the social distance. So, so that's, I'm just pointing out that your time period versus, versus what I was looking at, given that there would not be appointments, that, that, that person at the front desk would not be enforcing any kind of appointment or helping people make appointments, really does translate into just that person being there a little bit to help with answering general questions at pad control, employing people, like it was before. And then the treasurer's office then will be shut. And we just say, sorry, the treasurer's office isn't open. And you put a payment there or you can call them.
So we already had a motion on the floor to open tomorrow and it died for a while.
I understand, but I'm asking, what's the difference in your motion other than pushing us out two weeks at the time when, when people want to get in? Because it, so then moving it up avoids those kinds of...
What I'm hearing is that, that the things that are more difficult, perhaps, to get done with us closed, our motor vehicle registrations and title transfers and some of those things, as opposed to paying property taxes. Other than that, there was a glitch in, when Drady's district assessments got added to some property taxes, but that got resolved. Other than that glitch, I think paying your property taxes is one of the simplest things you do with the treasurer's office.
Right.
And there's a Dropbox.
Right.
So I'm not seeing that the real, I'm, from what I'm hearing from the treasurer's office, what takes longer is working on the motor vehicle, title transfer, those kind of issues. And those are not the ones that we're talking about with the property taxes. I don't think we're, we're giving anybody any huge inconveniences having them pay their property taxes online or in the Dropbox or by sending a check or by sending an e-check or all of those many ways. So I, that's why I just said, if, if that's where we have the biggest, just traditionally, if some people like to do it, if that's where we have the biggest concern about social distancing, why not avoid that concern by waiting until we do? That's why I'm, that was my rationale. You know, we could, we could, you know?
So I've been thinking about this after Ted's letter from our supervisor. I looked back at our meeting minutes and we said we'd, on the twenty-second, revisit reopening. We didn't have a date saying we were reopening states, so we revisited that. I'm not opposed to the October fifth. I'm just, I'm not, I'm not saying, anyways, I'm not opposed to that. But I think if we do something like this, and that's the hard set date, that if there's other issues that come up, the departments need to figure that, figure that out, you know, with the then, with then. Now, something else comes up, well, you need to figure that out and it's our hard set date is this particular date. It also gives time to have it on the website, saying that we are open and these are hours. We can push it out to our social media, saying we are open. If they're, you know, saying, okay, we're open twelve to four or eight to four, whatever hours we determine, and say, okay, use your appointment software, you know, departments have their appointment software. This is the date. This is what we're going to be open. And go, just have it clear like that. But if anything else comes up, that needs to be, that needs to be factored in, that they need to figure it out, that this is the hard set date that we're going to open up.
With that reasoning, Lisa, would you be open to them? We open eight AM to four thirty PM on October fifth.
I don't necessarily have an issue with that. I think the question comes with, I want to ask Jovi, is another level of sanitation that we need to, to do?
Well, I'll just say it. We open all day. The expectation of us sanitizing more throughout the day, say, it's probably not going to happen. I don't have the staff level to perform that. And then what, what do you dictate me saying, you know, we've already asked, everybody kind of do their part, do their thing, you know? What areas would you want sanitized periodically throughout the day? Would be the big, bigger question. Because that would dictate what would even be feasible, so.
Or, or do you, or do you look at, and I appreciate your, your comments, Jovi. Or do you look at a, okay, we open, pardon, October fifth to twelve to four, but put a limit on, that's a transition. You know, we're going to transition for, I'm just throwing that out there on this discussion. Do you, do you say, okay, for two weeks, we're going to do that so that we can kind of get back into the flow of things? And then on October fifteenth or from other dates, I'm not, whatever, we are open eight to four thirty? I'm just throwing that out for another discussion.
I understand.
I, mainly is, is a good, is the level of, I understand.
Well, I think, I think to Jovi's question about expectations, you know, Jovi, you tell us. Instead, the other way to do this is you tell us realistically what you think your staff might be able to maintain. Is that just keeping the lobby area down occasionally, you know, for that? And then the elevators, say, and, and common area. But then we need to step up like we already do in the Board of Supervisors office. And I think all the departments and offices are doing it, cleaning door jams and, you know, trying to keep their own areas disinfected. Or is there something else? You tell us what you could feel that you would, you and your department would reasonably be able to do and what are we going to have to then either forego or make sure we get done by ourselves?
Maybe one pass through the common areas of the building to sanitize everything once a day outside of what we already do. And then you got to ask yourself, statistically, did you really accomplish anything?
Okay.
Because to provide a sanitized surface at all times, you'd have to do it as soon as somebody touches it. Because it's only sanitized until the next person touches it. So.
And I think most public buildings and places now are putting out the hand sanitizer. We're doing the mask as we require them, right? I think those are the... We're doing natural, the mask, as we require them, right, being those available, and, and there, and there's signs reminding people, wash your hands, and social distance, or whatever, okay? And that's reasonably what we would be able to do. And that's all, and that's true whether we open it tomorrow, half days to every third person, or whether we do it, and just say October 5th, but that's it, we're, we're done with this, okay? We're reopening to the public. And, and I think, so your staff has been really good, Joby, and you've really tried to take care of us, and you have taken care of us. I'm just thinking that it's time for us all to move forward and stuff, and so if you say we're not going to be able to wipe down those areas and clean those areas, and maybe we even put up little signs, like in the restroom, reminding the restrooms only cleaned, you know, periodically, not, or daily, or month a day, or whatever, to remind people about their part.
I don't know that we necessarily need to put up that, I think people would kind of think of that a little differently potentially.
Oh, okay, oh, sure, okay, all right, I'm sorry.
I would just let you know that, just to, and I, I have a question, I guess, of what the other issues are about opening only half days versus full days, what, why, why that decision was made in the first place, or that recommendation? I do know that Nevada City Hall is open 10 to 2:00 Monday through Friday. They did talk about opening full time a couple of weeks ago and decided not to. I'm trying to find City of Ames, but I think they're open 40 hours a week.
They are, yes, yeah.
So what, what, what might be the other considerations if we're looking at October 5th? I guess that's what we're looking at now.
Linda?
We have to discuss something to get, to get to a decision. So if we're talking about October 5th, which we have been talking about, what would be the downside of opening up 40 hours a week? You know what, given that we're not expecting facilities managing people to follow around members of the public and clean everything that has been touched, because people need to have some responsibility on their own. We need to get a clean place, but we can't protect everybody from everything that might happen. What, what would be the other reasons to not open up from our norm, for our normal hours that we had before, which were 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM?
Linda, I can't speak for the recorder or auditor, but we, we know that we are going to get boatloads of mail, and in order to process those, we're going to have to stay closed half the day, which is what a lot of treasurer's offices are doing. Dallas County is doing that, a few others, Dubuque County, I think. So we would, we would need half the day to process mail, and I know that with what Joby just said, there's going to be a lot of members of the public who aren't comfortable coming in, so they're still going to want to do their transactions over the phone or through email just to avoid crowds. I know a lot of people will want to do that, so we're going to have to provide that option to people. So I don't think our office will be able to open for a full day until, we'll have to address how, how much, how many people move to coming into the office with a limited appointment system, or less ability to just run people through on a regular basis, so at the start anyway, we will not be able to open for full days. And I know that the Dallas County Treasurer's Office is now going on their third month, second month, being open half days and processing mail the other half of the day. So I don't know what the other offices would be doing.
My question to you, Ted, is that, that's fine, because what we're discussing is we're opening up, and you've got to solve your own problem.
Yep.
Now.
That's fine with us.
So here's the other part of that equation, though, all right? Is somebody going to be answering your phones, or are you going to turn your answering machine back on? Because otherwise, it becomes our problem again. The board of supervisors and probably the assessors' office.
When we are open to the public, we'll only have one person be able to answer phones, so it probably won't, we won't keep up. There'll still be people who want to call in, and, and they'll probably get, call another office, but we're going to explain on our outgoing message that we're accepting phone calls from 8:00 to noon, and we're open to the public from noon to 4:00. If you want to come in, set an appointment. If you want to call us back, call us back from 8:00 to noon, or shoot us an email.
Ted, I'm going to, well, I'm going to have to say something there, too, because when you're, when people can't leave a voicemail in your office or can't get hold of anybody, they probably already called the supervisor's office for your phone number, and then we transfer, and they call back and say, nobody's answering the phone, or I can't leave a voicemail, and we end up dealing with the dissatisfaction of you turning off your phones. And we spend a lot of time answering the phone for calls that are going to come to the, go to the treasurer's office. So I have to ask you to reconsider that.
We can, we can consider it, but if we're going to try to be doing 80 appointments, which is kind of our maximum amount, our clerks aren't going to have time to answer the phone. We're going to have everybody working at the front desk. We're only going to be able to have one person answer the phone. I talked to the 12 counties surrounding us in the District 1, and only two county treasurer's office allow people to leave voicemails. Everybody else said, we, we never, we shut off our voicemail long ago, because whenever we accept voicemails, people leave a voicemail and then call back within 10 minutes before the voicemail's even checked. And then when we call them back every 30 minutes after we check voicemails, it's just a lot of extra work. So we were one of the only counties even have voicemail. And in the afternoon, if we're going to have five clerks or six clerks doing appointments, we just aren't going to have the capacity to answer the phones while we're trying to get as many appointments in as possible.
No, I don't know that we're going to solve all of those problems for you at this table right now. Those are your management issues to solve as a treasurer. I just need to say that right now.
Okay.
We need to move forward. We need to not be answering your phone in the supervisor's office right now, because I see people running for the phone all the time, and it's 90% of the time probably calls for the treasurer's office.
And I just, like I told Lawrence earlier, I want to reiterate, we have five or six people answering at all times. We accept between 60 and 100 calls a day, and if they can't get through, that means five people are already on the phone. So, I mean, it's not that our phones are off, it's that we just don't accept voicemails right now.
Ted, do you need temporary help?
I think that we'll be okay once we get through property tax season in September. We also have a job posted for our supervisor that we're going to replace. We would, temporary help would have been a possibility, but it takes so long to ramp them up and get them to learn the systems. Temporary help, just answering the phone even, nobody wants to just be put on hold, they want an answer to a question, so I think that we've never really needed it before, but with the, just the way things are working, it, it might have worked if we would have done it in August, but we did not know at that time that we'd have somebody leave.
I don't think, I think this is a bigger issue to figure out, I mean, whether we had COVID or not, it may still have been a situation. And, and I, I don't know, we can resolve that.
That's a good point. What I'm trying to do is just try to get us to the point that supervisor Olson wants us to be, which is opening the admin building, right? And I think we all want to do that, but I just want to say, I'm working for, you know, I'm trying to get resolution for this. And that's what you're pushing, you know? I don't think it's going to be tomorrow, and I think there's good reasons why it's not tomorrow. If we do, now, I know there's a motion on the floor, let's vote it down, unless you want to vote it out. The motion I made was to open admin building on October 5th, hours of operation noon to 4:00. We could do that, and, well, I had some other things on it, so let's vote that motion down, okay? So the motion on the floor, which was seconded, Heddins?
No.
Olson?
No.
Merkin, no. That motion's gone. Okay. Let's talk it through so we don't have to do that very many times, okay? And our alternative, I'm not making a motion, I'm not going to make it until we have some discussion on it. An alternative, open the admin building from noon to 4:00 on October 5th, and then go four weeks later, which on, which is November 9th, the day before Veterans Day, but that's four weeks. So let's say, open Monday, November 9th, from 8:00 to 4:30. So that would give time for everybody to ease into getting back to full time. And you know what? I think we don't know what all issues will come up, and maybe giving people that half, half days opening for a month, and then going to full days gets us somewhere.
Well, I think some departments have already been doing some appointments and, you know, addressing the, the public as they come in. So I realized that we talked before about the 12 to 4:00. I don't have a problem, though, saying let's open up from 8:00 to 4:30 either. I think then you kind of assess and say, okay, do we need to pull back? Because I don't think we're going to know. I think even at 12 to 4:00, you put that out, I'm just not sure we're going to know. I recognize that the treasurer's office may do something different, I mean, with that department and stuff, but you're going to want people potentially, that are going to want to come to the other, the other departments. Now, maybe not, maybe people will say, oh, yeah, I'm used to it, I don't, I don't need to come to the other areas in person.
I'd like, Linda, I'd like to ask you if you picked a four week period and that November date, and I can't remember what you said in November, but immediately it struck me as the election would be over.
It's a five week period, and that's why it's five weeks rather than four, because the election is on Tuesday the 3rd, so Monday the 2nd would not be a good day.
Right, okay.
That's why I chose Monday the 9th, even on the following, Wednesday the 11th is Veterans Day, but I don't think that matters.
Right. So I still feel, I feel open, more open to us being open 8:00 to 4:30. But I understood why you went with the noon, I think that it has something to do with the election, I mean, that long a period. Because if you were to look at two, you know, we'd be open part time for the first two weeks, October 7th to whatever, 14 days is from that to 19th, or whatever, and then expand to full time for a transition period, but I'm not comfortable with being half days for that long.
Well, I suggested the 9th, yes, because we get past the election. And I know that the auditor, well, yeah, the auditor's got a plan where to do early voting. I don't know. So I know, I know that everybody will make do with whatever we decide here, and they will do a good job of it and make it work. I just want to make it the easy, you know, the best plan to help people make it work and give people some time to do some things rather than rush and have all the signs up by 8:00 AM tomorrow and, and do this or that. I just think that there's going to be issues that we have not thought about, and the issues, whether those issues are a bigger deal if we're open half of the time or all the time, I don't know. I just anticipate that it's going to be a big, big change for us that we don't even realize, because we have not had public in buildings for so long.
When these opened up, did they do just a, did they do a transition, or did they just open up? I just, I don't remember.
I think they just opened up.
That's what I was kind of thinking, too. Yeah, I, I, I agree, we want to be as cautious and take as many precautions as we can, and I think we've done a good job. Joby and his department have done a great job in getting all the plexiglass and all the cleaning and the masks ordered and stuff to be as ready as we possibly can to open. You know, I, I, I think if we set a hard date, people know it, and then you promote it out there. You know, you don't have it too early, that's one reason why I voted no for tomorrow, because it just felt like we're not able to let the public know, and the departments, to be prepared of saying, okay, you haven't had public potentially coming in, you are now, you've got a week, or we can have two weeks, whatever that date is, anything additional that you need to have in place that you hadn't thought of, barring that it's large, I mean, just kind of your flow of movement in the office or whatever, other precautions that you need to take place, they are prepared to say, okay, this is all going to be in place because we are opening on this set date.
I have a question for you, Joby. That project down there in Ted's office, can you get it done by October 5th?
No. And it's adding a workstation, where a workstation wasn't there. I don't, I don't like the term remodel.
Yes.
It's adding a doorway and adding a workstation. Most of the noise and the dust hopefully is done this week, but the material, the new actual workstation, the vermicah, is everybody familiar with that term? Won't be here for another two weeks, so.
So, Lisa, those are all really good reasons about why some heads up time for everybody is good, okay? My motion was very much based upon the fact we got to get this going and get something sold, yes, hard, had a hard date. I think I agree with Linda, then it's going to be a management problem in an office about getting the work distributed, getting it done. There were other parts of Linda's motion I did like really well about having the internal direct, internal operations and external operation directors working together to get that list of workers to staff the front desk for the first couple of weeks, you know, to determine. We cannot project the entire future.
I do see Lucy asked a question. What, if anything, would trigger Tuesday's, man, I can't read this.
Would trigger another building closure. If we reopen, that needs to be considered. Thank you. Yeah, and Lucy, thanks for writing that up, because that was something that I had said the last meeting, too.
It was on the list that I read.
Yeah, and I, I did say, yeah, it was on the list. What would be that trigger? Now, do you make that determination today what that trigger is, or do you put that on for next week? Or is it looking at the same type of matrix? Are we seeing, are we seeing an upward trend? Is it upward trend over so many, so many days? Is that, is that what we're, is that what we're looking at? Are we looking at staff in the building, you know, a larger percentage of people that that are out? That might be the trigger to have to close the building, at least temporarily. I think there's a whole lot of things that could do, but that was similar to the, to the conversation back in March. You missed to, when do we shut it down? I think you're kind of right back at that same.
I think there's two things, and this probably isn't the best way to say them, but one is significant staff absences due to isolation or quarantine.
Yeah.
The other one is a spike in positive cases just for accounting.
I guess a spike, and we can talk more, I like what you said, we don't have to determine everything today, okay? We say this is it, October 5th, but next week, we're going to talk about what would be the conditions if we had to shut down, you know, again, whatever, it's all like that. And then we can talk about, let's define a spike this time, rather than, you know, or how much of a spike, how many days, or whatever. So, yeah, hearing all of this, having this discussion, and knowing that we are now saying October, that that's a discussion, October 5th, and going for all day to see, you know, just let's go ahead and do it, that's where I'm more in favor, I'm not making a motion yet, but I'm more comfortable that we're going to meet this, that we're going to get, achieve, which is getting back open to the public and delivering services in a variety of ways to the public. And then each office will have to make adjustments accordingly, but let's, let's get this building open.
So you're saying you're in favor of all day unlocking, and Supervisor Heddins, what are you in favor of right now?
I said, yeah, I was open to an all day unlock in there, and then recognizing each of the departments may be, they may have additional signs saying they're closed or doing something a little differently. I understand that because of, and I'm just going to give Ted. I understand that because of, and I'm just going to give Ted's office, the treasurer's office, an example, they may not just take walk-ins right away because of the additional workstation that's coming in. And it just may be, that's what you're signing things, and it's probably not the best thing to have the public, you know, large quantity of public coming in. I, I recognize that.
So other what you're saying there, if offices close for part of that time and the building is open, I have to say, that's putting somebody down at the front desk, having to explain why they can't go in, why that office is closed even though the building is open.
Yeah, the thing is.
That's what we're trying to get by.
Yeah, no, I get that, and I, I recognize Jovi saying that two weeks till that vermicah comes in, but what if it's delayed three or four weeks? I mean, you don't have, something you don't have control over, then you're delaying it even.
But is that a reason to close the treasurer's office?
No, I'm not saying that, I, I'm not recommending that. I'm just saying, I don't have control over what they're going to do with that office. That's, that's what I, that was the clarity of mine is.
So Linda had the point earlier, and it was a great point, pointing out about we, and, you know, there is the risk with us, you know, we're going to take the overflow, right? We're going to get those people who don't want to wait. So I think we just need that signage, and I mean, I'd like to solve it all, but you're, that either there's a person down at that front desk who's saying, sorry, the treasurer's office has chosen not to open with the rest of us. You'll have to discuss with the treasurer the reasons for that. Here's the number, they may not get back to you right away, leave a message. I mean, that's all we're going to be able to do. I understand, I understand, there's no good way to do this if one depart, if one office doesn't open up. But at the same time, I'm back to, how often should we all compromise our operation and, and have to have that front door locked? So, you know, how longer the rest of us stop from conducting business with the public because one of one office? So, yeah, so, so I think they're going to, I don't know, maybe we had volunteered to staff, maybe we staffed it the first week ourselves and find out just how bad it is. I, you know, and I'm being somewhat serious about that. We're projecting a lot of expectations on the public, pro and con, right?
I, I think that the public is used to those expectations because you go to stores and you see things that say six feet apart, please, you're handed face covering. Well, I assume we're going to keep our, our maximum occupancy rates for social distancing instead of saying, okay, we have 75 people in this room, for example, which means we're going to continue to probably have most of our social, our public access via Zoom. So, and that also creates a problem, I'll just point out. And there's 20 people in here, we're going to have to say, I'm sorry, you can't come in to a meeting.
Yes. Or we try to go over.
Well, and, 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 and see there, there we have additional complications. That, you know, keeping it simple might, as much as possible, might be a good thing. But I'm just pointing out, there are other things like that that we haven't even talked about that are going to come up. But I think we will have to deal with those things as they come up. I would like to really have staff work out some of these details because I think they're, you know, might be the best way to, particularly the front desk, main desk. I, I just don't want, honestly, to have that become others providing appointment scheduling for the treasurer's office, because I think that asks too much. So, so I would, here's what it sounds like we're looking at. Opening the admin building October 5th to returning to our usual hours of operation, 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. And we will have more discussion on when we would consider re-locking the building under what circumstances, about what we've talked about, so. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we open the administration building Monday, October 5th, the hours eight to 4:30.
I would second that motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Is there anything further from anybody who is zooming in on the call? Is there anything that we have, have not discussed that you think would be important to discuss? Hearing nothing further. Headlands.
Aye.
Olson. Aye. Merkin, aye. You've got a decision, and let me just say for the record then, signage, I'm assuming, this gives a couple of weeks. Jovi and Leanne, would you kind of take inventory of the signage and figure out what needs to be taken down and changed? I guess, on the 2nd, close the day? Or if you mind, have people do it over the weekend, Jovi? But you folks would.
We'll figure it out.
We'll figure it out.
Are we doing designated entry and exits?
I like, I think everything in your plan is where we want to go.
Yeah.
I like it. And I'm seeing nods here, we're in agreement with, with all the specifics that you put together. I agree with Supervisor Olson. You've done a great job of giving us some recommendations. So I think we appreciate that.
Do you want to press release to go out to announce that?
Yes.
Yes.
Doesn't have to go out today. It can be timed prior to the 5th. The sooner it goes out, the sooner people will start coming over even before the date we're open, that's what I.
Right, right, right.
Thank you. And then Alyssa and Sandra, would you work on the main desk coverage plan? I know that gives more hours to be covered. So my personal thought is, we want to assess the value of that because we will be committing 40 hours of various staff time a week to staffing that main desk. So let's ask them to keep, maybe people can do that, maybe keep some, a few notes or something. We wanted to see the value of basically a full-time position, simply to say the treasurer's office is there, the assessor's there, the auditor's upstairs. Is that the kind of thing? Can we, you know, I'm saying, if directional signage can take care of 90% of the questions that come up, let's not have a person doing that, equivalent of FTE doing that. That's my thought. So I'm just saying that because there's some things we talked about during this conversation, and I wanted staff to follow up on it, and I wanted to make sure we were all clear with that plan. And we are, so, okay. Then, if we're, did we vote?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, I got lost in my step and my explanation. Go back to number one.
I also move, number one, as with the addition behind said building is closed to the public. Oh, wait, we went full-time.
We did.
Okay, I'll take it with the COVID-19 pandemic, all right, given our discussion. So I also move item one, as stated.
Is it as stated, or was it with the inclusion of fully or partially?
She took it out.
We took it out. We took it out because we're going full, and we'll just, let's just leave it out. Okay, so as stated here on the agenda, I still move second.
Further discussion? If not, Olson.
Aye.
Headlands.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Now, let's go on to discuss. Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it. Appreciate everybody's patience and understanding. I think we've got something that'll give direction now, we can move forward.
You know, I just like to say too, I know it's been a challenge, and I really appreciate everybody's input and Jovi, all the efforts and the work that you have done and your staff. I think the challenges come because of this pandemic and the information is consistently changing. You know, you look at one day or one week, the information that's provided, that's just what's made it harder to determine when is the right time to do something. So thank you very much for all the time you've put in. I want you to know it's not gone unnoticed.
Good, thank you. You're welcome, you heard that. Sandra, is there a little turn of nails? Pardon? I can't hear you.
Just the admin.
Just the admin building.
So HSC and Indian Medical Secondary Roads are under main doors and closed.
Well, HSC, we need refit. That's a partial, the door remodel. There's the door remodel, there's also the DHS issue there.
Yeah, if there's nobody on, if somebody had come in and nobody would know it on the downstairs, I think that was the difference there, why we wanted to have the phone out there. We would call in for those.
I think, I think that we should leave that one for now and get the doors done and revisit that one later. I have no problem with secondary roads building being open to the public. I think the engineers basically said that. Darren, are you on?
Yes, I am. We're prepared to open at any time the board wishes.
I'd entertain a motion then for second, to open secondary roads to the public. Do you have a date, Darren?
I mean, we could do it next week or just wait to match the admin, doesn't matter to me.
Let's wait so that we'll do a press release for both of them, yep. So October 5th.
I would entertain a motion that we open secondary roads, unlock secondary roads building to the public effective October 5th.
They'll move second.
Headlands.
Aye.
Olson. Aye. Merkin, aye. Okay, thank you, Darren. And if there's not a motion on the human services building, I will assume that we're not looking at opening it right now and we're waiting to see how the doors go. Okay. And I will talk with Mike Cox a little bit more about, just to make sure what he means on that total. But I do think conservation does have a different operation, and I'm sorry I misstated what their, what their protocols were. I didn't have a copy in front of me when I started talking, which is always a mistake.
Yeah, I would appreciate you doing that, because I know there's two on there, two bullets, not only the 14-day total, it's then and.
And it was a difficult conversation. Sometimes it's, and I tried to, tried to figure that one out on, but it's not as simple as a conference call sometimes. I miss in-person meetings sometimes. It's easier to talk about things like this. But I'll call up Mike on that, and he can come back and see what, see maybe they'll, I'd like to see if they would, if they think about revisiting that. Okay. And what have we missed then?
Animal shelter.
Animal shelter, I would think we need to continue to leave it closed.
Yeah, as is. I thought we were pretty definitive on that, we're sitting on the date. Yeah, so that, yeah, our minutes of the state close until fully, fully staffed, so.
Okay, so nothing, nothing else then. Thank you for bringing it back to all the other buildings, I think. Okay. Now, Sandra and Alyssa, discussion and consideration of hiring freeze exemption request for the director of planning and development.
Good morning, still morning. Oh, still morning, okay. Requesting authorization to fill a position, planning and development director, resigned, as you know. So I'm requesting to fill that position, it's a very critical position. Jerry and I started going over the transition plan last night and quickly found that it was not only a very long list for a small department, but that there were some items that we had to add as we went along. We didn't even get to the end of the list, and we were adding things to it. So two requests, one to fill the position, and then one to fill it on an interim basis while we're recruiting.
What would your plan be to fill it on an interim base?
Excuse me?
What would your plan be to fill it on an interim basis?
To have somebody in the role to be shepherding the projects, to recruit internally, and to have somebody in that role.
You're talking about an existing staff member?
Yes, I would want to recruit from existing staff.
And then, we still then would be one staff person short, so.
Exactly.
Would you be looking at coming back to ask about somebody temporary to assist if possible in that department?
Certainly looking at all options, that would definitely be one option. Jerry and I had started discussions about adding an additional plan, and he was in the process of collecting information from peer organizations, trying to compare staffing levels, positions, those types of things. And, you know, we had, we were kind of just at the beginning stages of that process. And I remember thinking one weekend, oh, got a really good team, I hope nobody leaves right away, and then come back. And Jerry dropped a bombshell, very excited for him, but it does sort of put us in a pickle.
I'm going to ask for the HR perspective on this of doing interim director position and how the county's normally operated with that. We do come up to the table perhaps, sir, for both to go.
Yep.
You want to sit? You guys, sorry.
This is easier. Good morning, board. We do have, in our policies, that you can name an interim director. We do have that covered in our compensation policy. We have done that for a few positions in the past. We've also had a few where we felt like it was better to have the supervising individual take on those roles with, with the structure in the board's office. So we do have a mechanism in place that, that with the board's approval, it would come with an action form to a Tuesday morning agenda to go, to have somebody be interim director for, for, for the term until we hire a director. So we have done that in various departments throughout the county, through my tenure here.
So when you said the supervising individual, prior to the creation of the external and internal, was that then, it became the supervisor, or are you talking?
No, I just meant, there have been recent situations where either Sandra or myself have filled that role.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to make sure.
Yep, no, no, no. And, and we have it in there so that if, if the board does put somebody, or, or, you know, the director of external operations would make a recommendation to have an interim director, we do have the policies to compensate that individual. Prior years predates 10 years ago, we did not have that policy or that process in place. It's pretty, pretty consistent for government organizations to name an interim if, if that's needed. There just needs to be a mechanism to compensate that individual.
So let me ask about, then if we brought in somebody temporary who had planning and experience, planning and development experience, just to serve as the third person to help with some of the work, but not being a supervisory or the interim director or anything, okay? Do we have to go through a whole recruitment process on that?
If it's an employee, yes, temporary, or not exempt from veterans preference, you would still have to advertise that position unless you would go the contract.
Okay.
And I don't know what's out there for contract in health as far as a planning position.
So I'm just thinking about an employee who used to work here, who changed professions and is not working right now because of the pandemic.
If you're going to hire them as an employee, you would need to advertise, take applications to be compliant with veterans preference.
But we could do as a contract, such if that person came in as a contractor, an independent contractor.
There, there may be, it, it, it would, we would need to take a look at that and make sure they make the IRS definition of a contractor. I meant through like a staffing firm.
I understand.
And different things. So we, we typically get legal involved when you're going to hire somebody on a contractor basis. It's an employee versus independent contractor.
I just want to know, because I'm thinking of someone we should make a call to, but if they have to apply, we would.
It would take, it, it, and it would, I'm not saying it, it's not going to take the length of probably the recruitment for a director, but.
We've still got that.
We still have a leg.
All right.
Yeah, unfortunately.
So is that something that might be a question for Sandra, that you're going to still look at to determine whether you do an interim or what if you were both of you kind of take over that role and then bring it back to the board?
I'm making two requests today. I'm making two requests.
Okay.
Wanted to fill the position, and wanted to start off with the authorization to put an interim person in that role.
And that, if.
How's it worded?
If Sandra has that in the request, it's in the request for an interim. The interim, if Sandra would decide to request the interim director, that action form would have to be placed on a board agenda for that additional compensation, so.
So really, all we can act on today is. So really all we can act on today is.
You can give her authorization to fill it on an interim basis today.
She does have it.
Yep.
She does have it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, but it's not on the agenda. It specifically says for the Director of Planning and Development. That's our agenda item.
I don't think the interim piece is an issue. I think, I think this position is vacant. I think in her request and documentation, she's asking to fill it on a permanent basis. But in the interim, she's asking to bring that action form forward at a, at a future Board meeting.
Okay, I think.
There's no extra position.
Here's where I feel, okay? Just my feeling. We just, because the County Attorney and Assistant County Attorney got on the phone with the Executive Director of IPID, Iowa Public Information Board, last, was it last week or Monday morning? Or, yeah, it was last week. It basically had a very long conversation getting us to not have formal charges filed against us about the agenda situation, that posting at all. I am not comfortable with approving something that is not specifically listed as an item on this agenda.
So I have, I have a clarification question for you then. This is not hiring an additional individual. This would be an additional Board action in the future to name a current employee as interim director.
Yeah, that would be separate and, but I say even the temporary person. And yeah, I, I will not vote on that today. I'll vote on once listed on the agenda. I just think this is not a good time for us to be flaunting, given what us having to just gotten over self-disposing Iowa Public Information Board dozens of meetings not posted correctly. I think this is a bad time to start reading between the lines here.
Can I just make a clarification statement? I do not feel that the interim director position is, is applicable to the hiring freeze. I think you are promoting, you, you are giving somebody those duties on an interim basis that the, the hiring freeze is for any vacant. This would be a current employee that's taking on additional duties for a one month, two month period. There would be separate action by the Board in order to approve this at a later Board meeting. It does not have to be approved today. I think Sandra just wanted to get direction from the Board to move forward in that piece by putting it, just to let you know that she would like to bring forward an item to put somebody in that interim director. That, that's how I, I take it.
So we're not pre-approving it?
No, you still have to take action on that. That would be a separate action. She hasn't listed who that would be. That would be a separate action for possibly next Tuesday meeting.
I do have some concern about naming interim directors in a very small shop where the person you're naming as an interim director may be a person who's applying for the position and then looked at sometimes as a decision was already made. That's my concern about it. However, it may be a reality that there's work that needs to be done that needs to be compensated. So I, I, I guess Sandra, if you want to bring it to us, but we can't commit at this point because we're not formal on the agenda, we can't commit that yes, we're going to approve it. And I would like to suggest that as, that you prepare to, if you're going to make that request or whatever, that we seriously look at the situation where maybe you serve in that capacity and you and Alyssa work out something with your, maybe some of your duties if you feel you're kind of over, overextended right now or whatever. I'd like to see us, when we have that discussion, to be able to discuss multiple possibilities, multiple, multiple options. Well, she puts it on the agenda for next Tuesday. I think we can discuss options next Tuesday.
I don't, I don't have any problem, Board, of taking on additional duties. And as you know, I keep very long hours already. I work around the clock, I work on weekends, et cetera. However, I did just finish handling the animal control director position and that position is vacant. And I know that there will be extra duties in this position, whether or not specifically named as the Director in interim. However, that's a very technical position. And in order for the Story County residents to still receive the quality of services that they're used to receiving, it needs to be an interim director. And I understand that's the Board's decision, but I think that's the additional information that you need to have.
Yeah, just Heather. So put it on the agenda for next Tuesday and we'll discuss it then.
Okay.
That'll be good. Thank you. So what I would, is there, are there any questions about the remainder of Sandra's request, which is to fill the Planning and Development Director position?
I don't see, I mean, there's no question.
What I'm going to do then, well, I will, I will, I will cross out the part on this form as I prove it if we prove this motion about the request to fill interim basis and just say, we'll deal with that next week. So is there a motion to, to approve lifting the hiring freeze or to allow, not lifting the hiring freeze, to allow the Director of External Operations to hire, to proceed with the hiring for Planning and Development Director?
I still move. Second.
Further discussion if not, Olson.
Aye.
Edens.
Aye.
Merkin, aye. Approved. Heading on to department reports, there are none. Other reports, we have Darren Moon with us again. Discussion of possible application for a build grant on the 150th Street Skunk River Bridge replacement. Good morning, again.
Morning. What I have here is the Iowa County Engineers Association is looking at putting together an application for a federal grant for bridge funds. We did this back in 2018 and we were successful in that and Story County was successful. We got $300,000 out of that grant for a bridge on E18 that will be built next construction season. The build grant that was on the Board agenda, just, I wanted to point out, that's for FY '20. We don't know what the FY '21 grant process is going to be or what the funding amounts will be yet. But it takes so much time prepping that application, we need to get a head start on it. And that's what we're trying to do here. So what we're doing is County Engineers Association is putting a grant together, but they need to hire a consultant to do this. I mentioned the 2018 grant. The DOT had a few bridges in that, so the DOT went ahead and funded that consultant. It was somewhere in the neighborhood of $100,000, I believe. And they covered the entire thing, so we didn't have to deal with it at that point. This one, the DOT is not participating in, so we are somehow going to have to come up with a way to fund the consultant. First of all, I should mention, I feel like we have a, a good application for our bridge on 150th Street over the Skunk River. They want a bridge that's over 150 foot in length and that one will meet that requirement. And they're looking for bridges that are just generally hard to fund for counties. They haven't been done because this bridge on E18 or not E18, 150th Street would be about a million two, 1,200,000. And we generally get $350,000 a year for federal bridge money allocated to us. This grant money is above and beyond that. And that would take, you can see three to four years of our allocation. So those types of bridges that are hard to fund is what we're, our goal is to fund some of those throughout the state of Iowa. This application is due just to the County Engineers Association, so they can start ranking those bridges. It's due next Wednesday. We, we just found out about this last week, so we're on a bit of a short timeframe. But the main thing I want to make the Board aware of is part of the application, one of the questions is, does the Board of Supervisors agree to fund their share of the consultant fees for creation of the final build grant application, even if the grant is not awarded? It's a difficult question to answer because we have no idea what that cost is going to be, first of all. And then second, we don't know how many counties will be in that pool to split that cost. I've talked with the county, our Service Bureau Director is one that's taken over this grant responsibility. I've talked with him. He's anticipating $4,000 to $5,000 per county when it's all said and done. And keep in mind, we submit this application to the County Engineers Association and they could not submit it in the final grant. And if that happens, we're not on the hook for any of the consultant fees. It's only if we're selected to be a part of the application by the County Engineers Association. So one, we don't know, they also felt like it would be less than that $100,000 DOT grant consultant fee. So I think I'm pretty comfortable saying it would be in the $4,000 to $5,000 range, but we just don't know. So that's the main thing I want to make the Board aware of. I currently have engineering consultant fees budgeted. We have general engineering fees we budget each year for bridge designs and stuff like this that come up. So not asking for any additional money at, at this point, I'm basically making the Board aware. I would like to submit this application. And if you think it takes some sort of Board action, I've got till next Wednesday so I could get something on next Tuesday's agenda if the Board would like to take some sort of official action on it. But I don't believe it's required.
So my first question here, Darren, is just, the only document we had attached on the agenda was something that had out deadlines of May and whatever. But this is the same program you're just pointing out, that, that the deadlines have been extended, first of all, right? This was just information on the grant itself, correct?
Correct. That, that's the difficult part of all this. We're just, we're guessing and predicting what's going to happen for next fiscal year. So I have really no information to give you other than what happened last year.
So my next question has to do with the fact that if we were to just say, put on the agenda next week to give, to give you approval up to a certain dollar amount, would that come from our general fund, kind of the extra money? Or would, or would we just say it would come, come out of your engineering consulting fees in your?
Yeah, it would just come out of the secondary road fund and we already have it budgeted. So technically, it probably wouldn't take any Board action, but this is a new, this is a new thing I've never asked for before. So I mainly want to make you aware of it.
Okay, thank you. So if, if this were to be funded through this, I don't, I have no problem with you taking the consultant fees, just doing that out of your current budget. Because that's what you said you've got that budgeted for anyway. But I do want to think about long-term what that might mean for the county. And I'm not enough familiar with this kind of build, this kind of grant. Is it a 100% grant? Would we be looking at 75%? Would, would there be a county match on the grant?
There would be, like I said, we don't know the details yet, but the last one, there was a 75% funding and then 25 would be a local match, but that would come out of our, the federal bridge funds that we already get. So it wouldn't require any additional local funds.
Well, this, I can't see where we have any, any, that here at all.
Right.
If you're, if you're saying you got the money to cover what is likely to be the consultant fee and if, if we got it and we only have to pay that anyway if they accept our proposal, so we pay that. And you're saying 70, usually the grant gives you 75% and you can use your other, other $350,000 a year you get towards the 25.
Yeah, and also keep in mind, this bridge is already budgeted for us to spend our regular federally money on in, let's see.
22, wasn't it?
Like it's in 2023 right now. But like I say, it's one of those bridges hard for us to fund, so I'm not sure that was really going to happen.
And it's not on a paved road.
Correct, it's a gravel road.
Load posted right now?
Yes.
I tried to look at your map and I found the bridge, but I couldn't find how this number correlated to our latest post, load posting. So I didn't know how, what it was posted at. They're different numbers somehow.
Oh. Okay. Um, I can tell you real quick. It's posted 19 tons right now. And the other thing I, I didn't mention yet is we've already started the design on this with a consultant. And that, that's another reason why this is such a good application, because there's a really short timeframe to get these built. And these longer bridges take years to develop and we're already through that process. They're all, they're also looking for those bridges that you're halfway through the design process already, so you can get it going quickly.
Well, this is a good opportunity for us. Okay, I don't have any problem myself with, with Darren just going ahead because it's already in our plan. He's got the money. He's got the money covered every which way, it sounds like. So I don't, I don't feel a need for you to bring it to us, but I do, personally, I do appreciate the heads up on it. It's good to know. Either of you, do you need it on the agenda next Tuesday?
No, I don't.
No, I don't.
We're good.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Darren.
Okay, let's go to upcoming agenda items.
The only thing that I will have is, I believe next week we'll have boost for children. Fisher, Kelly, Partake, or, and just give a little update on their annual report.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to ask about anticipated CICS discussion of the request for three counties to join CICS.
That, that may be another one, yes.
Okay.
Yes, thanks for that reminder.
Okay. Laura, you got anything?
Oh, not as far as upcoming agenda items.
Okay, good. I don't either. Okay. I do honor them. Yep. Okay, public forum number two, comments from the public on items not on this agenda. The Board may not take any action because the open meeting salon requirements, but we may do so in the future. If anybody has an item they would like to forward during this public forum, you can unmute yourself, raise your hand, or you start on if you're on the phone. Anybody? Seeing none. Public forum's closed. Liaison assignments, committee meeting updates and announcements from the supervisors. I have something on my mind, so let me start if I could. Go ahead. I received an email this morning from John Pop, Mayor of Ames. Got the AAMPO meeting tonight. Are you attending that, Laura?
Yes.
He was concerned that the three of what we had hoped would be roundabouts north of Ames, the 190th and Hyde Grant Breton, as we call it, or the 190th and Carver, or the Carver and Cameron ones. Only one of those made it into the plan and it was in the plan as either a roundabout or traffic signals. And the other two didn't make it into even the second and third phases of the plan. He was concerned that, he, he's very much favored roundabouts and I think there are some good traffic reasons to do so, in particular in those kind of locations. He was concerned that by the time we ever got around to doing those, that there would be so much development around there that the round, the idea of a roundabout there, the potential would just become so difficult. So he was hoping that we could talk, talk those up a little bit into the plan, getting them. And I just wondered if you, so you're going to be, I'm going to zoom in on that meeting as well, but you are our official representative right now, so I need to make sure you knew. Yes, and, and just to clarify again, I think I might have said this after the last AAMPO we foresaw this. The plan is based upon the federal and DOT scoring. And it's all set out to what the feds will fund or state redirected money. Those can still be done with local money. So the point I, and, and that's what I was told when I brought it up before and was pretty adequate about it. So I will reiterate as backup what John wants to say tonight, but the real key here related to this 2045 forward plan is going to be to try and get the city staff and the consultant to recognize that they will save some money for these funded locally. Because that's the key, is they didn't score anywhere near high enough, except for the Hyde one, to make it to this federally mandated plan that scores according to federal preferences. But that doesn't mean we can't do it. So it's, it's hard to call this, it's certainly not a comprehensive plan because it's only what the feds and the state value, not what we may have to do locally. So I see one of you back at the table again to try and work with the city of Ames to get on script. When would there even be discussions about what local entities would be willing to sponsor or fund together? Well, tonight we can say we would be willing to sponsor, because that's, the list is talking about projects that we would sponsor, meaning we would come up with a match. Okay? So my question though is, we haven't taken any official action on sponsoring something like that. We have not. So, but we can.
We have not, so, but we can say, we can say, if you move it up, we'll show us a sponsor. But then my recommendation would be that after this plan is adopted, because it was pretty clear from what the staff said, that when we have the public hearing on October 27th, they're unlikely to change anything and they're, all right. So, but that I would urge, because that's budget time, when we start working locally and we, for on our budget and they start on their budgets, is that I would urge that maybe that's the time for us to transfer over as far as who the rep is on the AAMPO and there'd be a meeting scheduled to bring those two, try to get people together again.
Would you say tonight that we have interest in having discussions about sponsoring some of these projects?
Yes.
And working with you locally to get them funded?
I will say that.
Can do that without, we have not taken official action, but we've had many discussions and we had a discussion in open meeting.
And I don't want to see my name in the paper saying I made some kind of offer, okay? I have a little different experience than I did three years ago. Okay, sounds like a good one.
That's why I wanted to bring it up at the table. So, we were in agreement that, you know, we're not saying, you know, we're saying we'd like to pursue discussions, it's not saying we're going to do something.
That's right, which is what I said before.
Yeah, okay.
Sounds good.
We have it for the record then. That was the only thing that I wanted to bring up, or, well, I'll check my calendar to see if there's anything else. Supervisor Olson, did you have any other, any other updates on the 20?
Uh, no, just heard of. We're just briefly going to be on the phone to approve a couple of contracts, non-contracts. I have CFR, we've got CCMT tomorrow, you know, so that's my meeting schedule and then tonight. So, unfortunately, I'm heading to the end of the month here, so.
Yeah, tomorrow's day, I've got CCMT as well. I've got a form training on my calendar tomorrow. And then Thursday, I do have CICS meeting and then the jurisdiction, jurisdictional meeting that may, although I may have a conflict potentially, so, I want to take some good notes in case I'm not on, just give me updates.
And those notes are good because you can read them afterwards.
Yes. That's it. And then Monday, I do have the MICA board meeting.
Okay. There is a meeting tomorrow, which is primarily a staff meeting, Ames Urban Fringe Plan. However, Jerry sent something out about it and said a couple of city council members from Gilbert were attending and I said, well, yeah, I might be, they are going to. I would like to just listen because I'm very interested in that process. So, I'm going to, tomorrow afternoon, just zoom in to listen to that meeting. Also, do have the CCMT as the rest of us do. I have Torey Rivers Thursday evening and the jurisdictional executives and I think Friday's pretty, and next Monday, we're looking at, yeah. That's pretty much it for now. Working on several projects. And we are working on, Mike Cox is assisting, Leanne is assisting to work on bringing together the WMA for Headwaters at the South Skunk and potentially, you know, because we have to get, but we have a 2080, but nothing else really going, but Mike Cox has agreed to help with a grant application to DNR because there's some monies available there that would help facilitate getting that WMA going. So, I'm working on that right now.
I forgot to tell you, Friday, I am going down to Des Moines for a tiny houseless symposium.
Are you going to go there?
I saw that.
I inquired if they have that, but enforced the face masks and social distancing because Des Moines has a mandate too, or proclamation, okay? And they have confirmed that they will be doing that for me, so I'm going to go to the symposium.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, that sounded interesting. I think you have some information there.
Well, I just would like to make just one other comment. I went on, sorry, Saturday, the 19th to kind of the soft opening or initial review of the American Fields. That is an extraordinarily neat place and it's just going to really be a great addition in Story County, the accessibility of all of the, like swings and the gym area, I don't want to call it just a jungle gym, but it's like, it's almost like a treehouse that you go into, the climbing, the field itself and the, the ground kind of covering they have on there. It is inviting, it's inclusive and I'm really excited to, when they do start playing their games there, I look forward to cheering the teams on.
Cool. Thanks for that. I was scheduled to go and I ended up with a conflict and couldn't make it, so I was assuming it was going to be as, as really cool as it sounds like it was going to be, but I hear that. Thanks for representing us there. Okay, then, I would, if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Some move.
Second, goodness.
Aye.
Olson. Merkin, aye, meeting is adjourned.